All I do.
I know the site.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Interesting.
Uh, welcome to the Town of a Canlis Planning Commission meeting for July eleven, twenty twenty-three. And we are going to actually have a very short meeting this evening. The first item on the agenda uh has been tabled at the request of the applicant. It was uh for the Hillview Lane overflow parking lot development for the North Allegheny School District. They have made that request, as I understand it, to table postpone, and so we won't be going forward with agenda item number one. Which takes us to agenda item number two, which is the Valvoline land development application at one oh five three three Perry Highway. And we need a motion to accept the application for review. Can I have a motion?
I move Sean a second.
Second Brendan, second. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, so uh we are ready for a presentation discussion, and I assume that's the gentleman on Zoom.
Yes, we have Mr. Matt Yanda Yanda. Is it Yanda? Did I get that right?
Yanda, yes, surprisingly, you said it right. I hear a lot of Yandas and just hearing that my entire life, I just say yes to both.
I uh it was a close call, but I corrected course at the last second. So Matt, um, I think, let me see if you can share your screen if you don't. Hang on, I probably need to just I think I need to enable you to be.
Yeah, I'm currently disabled with that function there. So let me know when that's.
That'd be good.
Let's give it a try. Share screen. Let me know if you can see here.
Yep.
Yes, yes, we can.
It's visible.
Oh, perfect. Well, um, appreciate everyone's time here. Um, as stated, my name is Matt Yanda with C E S O here tonight, representing uh Valvoline. Um, address uh for C E S O is one seven five Montrose West Avenue Akron, Ohio. Four four three two one. And uh here tonight, representing Valvoline for the proposed instant oil change facility located at ten five three three uh Perry Highway. Uh, the current sites, if you see the Google Earth here, is an existing abandoned bank facility just north of the existing McDonald's site here. Uh, the scope of this project will simply be to completely demolish this abandoned bank site to make way for a new two thousand square foot Valvoline instant oil change facility with associated parking and landscaping. Uh, in regards to access for this site, we could start with the existing sites um along Perry Highway here that goes uh northwest to southeast. There are two existing curb cuts connecting to Perry Highway. Uh, we sat down, spoke with the D O T, coordinated with them, and in this meeting, uh, they would like to see these two existing curb cuts demolished to make way for a single curb cut, as you'll see on the site plan here, that connects to Perry Highway. It should also be noted at the rear of this site here that is in the western direction. There is an existing cross access easement that connects to McDonald's. Uh, the plan is to keep this cross access uh with McDonald's in place for this proposed project here. So that's at least a brief overview of the scope of construction and what we're looking to do in this project. But uh for those of you that are unfamiliar with uh Valvoline, there are over um fifteen hundred of these instant oil change locations uh located along the nation here. Um, the primary operation for these Valvolines is uh quick oil changes and uh minor preventative services. Uh, these services are performed entirely within the confines of the building itself and can be accessed through a drive-through here. So uh gives the customers the opportunity to stay in their cars throughout uh the start and finish of the service process here. Uh, just a little brief history on where we are, at least in regards to this project. Um about, what would that be? A month and a half ago, two months ago, uh, we submitted to the township our um site development package. And uh recently, we received a comment letter from um this technical review. Uh, currently, we are working to revise our plans according to these comments, and when we're revising these plans, we're looking to address every comment properly. So once we do come back with a re-submission and everything's addressed, we're not looking to need any variances or waivers moving forward here. We're trying to at least get everything so as in compliance with all of the requirements here. And uh one thing to note in regards to this comment letter, the vast majority of the comments are in relation to the storm sewer and water quality management here. And as I said before, uh, even though these aren't technically zoning related, they are more so in the engineering category, looking to address those all properly, just to ensure we are in compliance with all the jurisdictional standards here. But uh, that being said, uh, we're looking forward to working with the township here. Um get this thing moving forward and deliver the best product to you guys. Um, before I guess I turn it over to the commission here, uh Craig Melvano with uh Valvoline is on. Just want to make sure he wants to uh add anything additional as well.
No, I think you covered it pretty well.
Appreciate it. Yeah, no problem. I guess at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the commission here. Appreciate everyone for their time tonight.
Okay, um, I'll start down here and Al, if you've got any questions.
Uh, can you uh give me some idea what kind of volume for cars we think would be in and out of this uh station?
Um, so at least typically, um, I'll need to pull up the at least daily averages. Unfortunately, I do not have that on hand. Um, just to give at least a brief idea here. Um, for this rear of the building here, we have our drive-through queue here. Uh, that's meant to hold three rows, so three rows of cars and three rows back. So that's a total of nine cars in the queue. While there's three in the building being serviced. Uh, this is pretty much a standard throughout the nation, and usually this is far more um queuing space than is required. This is least ensures that there's no backup that goes into any of the right-of-ways or neighboring properties here.
And if if I'm looking at this right, is there a an ingress and egress or an access in it and and access in and out on Perry Highway?
Yeah, sorry. Um, it might be a little confusing with this cardinal directions are a little rotated here. Um you see north is kind of going in plan east here.
Yeah, we're basically looking at it from the road. So, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're looking, we're looking west, but it says, it says, there's, there's an access kind of right in the middle of the drawing. Then there's an arrow in and out to the right of that. And then there is
Those are sidewalks being.
Two arrows, one in and out at the back of the property.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure.
That's connecting to the existing McDonald's. That's the existing cross access easement with McDonald's.
Yes, is it? So the this this could someone come in and out through that?
Yeah.
McDonald's parking lot?
Uh, they could. It would not be ideal because at least if you look through this McDonald's here, say they enter through it. Don't memorize the street name here. If they're coming in the McDonald's site through the south, it is a one-way um counterclockwise circulation. So rather than just pulling north through, they would have to go all the way along the site and access the building that way. So at least it wouldn't be a heavy traffic um access point there.
And on Perry Highway, if you look on the drawing, as we're looking at, it says access, and then it has a to the right of that, it has a in arrow and out arrow. So is the access where the two arrows are in and out? What's this other access? I'm I'm looking. I'm not sure what that is.
Uh, so at least along Perry Highway, there's one curb cut connection that's going to have, and sorry, I'll cloud it here. So you can see this will be our only curb cut connection to Perry Highway. It will be an ingress and egress curb cut.
Okay, so I think what's confusing is you're showing existing sidewalk staying and new sidewalk being put in on either side of it, correct?
Correct, yes.
Uh, that's looking like it's an access point.
Oh, sorry.
That's the, that's why I'm like the question.
Oh, sorry, this access you're referring to. Um, that is an existing uh easement. Um, there's probably should be more text that needs to be cleaned up there. It looks like an access point, and I could see how that's confusing there. Yes, sorry, that is an access easement, and we could kind of clean up that text to make it a little more clear there.
And one reason I ask you about the volume in cars, it's, there's already significant traffic at that light. Um, now you're gonna have people turning in and out of that thing. And then people trying to make the left-hand turn going north on nineteen. It's just, it's just, it's, it's a little bothersome to me when I think about that. Um.
I suspect people on the left will go to the protection of the light by McDonald's.
Well, my fear would be you, instead of doing that, you, instead of making the left, you go down the hill and go through the McDonald's parking lot. That's what, that's what I would do if I looked at this.
And and I was there today. Granted, it was new time, but the bypass lane was blocked. There was no way anyone would get out of your sight going through McDonald's.
But that's their risk.
So that that would be the two, the the two the technical concerns I I have. Um and and I I think there'd be have to be some some further delineation or discussion around those, around those points, other than whatever uh gateway, whatever issues Gateway has, I'll leave those to Gateway at this point, but those would be two issues that are concern me as I look at it.
And it should at least be in regards to the traffic along Perry Highway. That is a D O T road. We are coordinating with them in regards to the traffic volumes there and at least working through it. They at least, um, again, I'll have to pull up nine notes with them, at least in regards to the bank when it was operating. I believe this Valvoline site does have a lower uh average daily traffic than that of the bank that was there before it.
Wow, that it really. The way that it goes. Sorry, I don't know if you can hear me or not. This is Craig with Valvoline. So typically, the way it goes, if there's a three-car stack behind the building waiting to get in, uh, people won't stop. They'll they'll drive by. So.
Yeah, they won't be able to see the stack. It's behind the building.
I'm sorry, you're saying see the stack from Perry Highway there?
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
Um, so at least.
So they get on the side.
The uh bay doors are um at least, let me see if I have a picture of them. I do here. Find it. They are transparent. Once I find the elevations here, there we go.
Look at storefront glass, you can see through.
Well, I mean, I I think that you know, aside aside from yes, PennDOT determines whether you have to make traffic light improvements and so on and so forth, and I think that that will come out, whether it's required through the H O P process. However, I think it's a valid point that you just knowing this road locally, this is not an area where anyone is expecting somebody to stop. Um, and to with the speeds that people actually travel on the road, which we've learned pretty recently, because we did a sidewalk project right around the area. Um I don't think you're gonna be able to see through the bay doors unless you basically stop. So I mean, po- point understood, but I think due to the conditions of this road, it might be a little challenging for people to make that assessment with the space that they have.
But on the other hand, they're actually moving their entrance farther from the intersection of Richard Road and what is that? Um, Reichold?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's essentially where one of the entrances is now.
Yeah, they're.
Oh, it's well.
They're two.
The one access, but I mean, they're removing the one that's closer to the intersection.
No, they have two access points now, the existing.
Well, this one you can get closer.
The southern.
All I'm saying is that they're entitled to have an access to the Route nineteen.
Sure.
And they have moved it about as far as they can from the intersection and on the property as they own it. And I actually believe them from my own experience that the Valvoline at best has the same um similar um traffic volume that the bank did and possibly less.
So um, I actually was able to find that traffic letter there at the peak hour there. That is a P M peak hour. Uh, they see a total of fourteen trips that includes seven in and seven out. So that's the peak within an hour.
What is the hour? What is the peak hour?
Uh, P M.
Time wise.
What?
I'm sorry?
You're just saying what 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 time?
Time.
Uh, I I don't believe there is a specific time there. Um, I I would need to at least consult with my traffic engineers if we're gonna get a little more uh fine-tuned than that.
Yes, it would be good to know a time because the traffic on the road backs up considerably. Um, and as does the traffic in the McDonald's parking lot with the two drive-throughs now.
But does it really matter? They have, they're legally they legally can have access to their property. And and actually, it's an improvement if in fact their statement is correct, that they have potentially less less traffic than the bank did. And I'm just saying that I'm I'm not denying that as far as your site selection, I mean, I did site selection for McDonald's, so I know about site selection. This is not the best that there is, but then a Valvoline is not McDonald's. And you can't deny someone a use that is reasonable. Um, you know, based on that there's traffic on this road that they have no control over.
On the other hand, though, we have to make sure, and I know PennDOT will be dealing with this, but in your meetings with PennDOT, have they talked about making any um modifications to Perry Highway to show there's a turn lane there? Because right now, there's a gap in the turn lanes.
Uh, they have not. At least for conversations with PennDOT, they felt that at least modifications to Perry Highway would not be necessary.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, this is uh Dan Quordham. I'll defer to PennDOT, obviously, but if I were a passenger traveling north on Perry Highway, trying to turn left into your Valvoline facility, there will be, I think, several times during the day, certainly at rush hour evening, where it's going to be tough to turn left, heading north, turn left across traffic, traffic which has stopped at a light many times.
Well, there you, there's a median there. You actually can't turn left into.
This is just past where the median is.
Yeah.
The problem is that the dedicated turn lane for the light starts right at the median.
Right.
And then the turn both ways lane.
The answer is that if people, would people always obey the traffic laws? No.
No, but the way that it's signed, you just can't turn left.
Right, so you cannot turn left into this going north?
It'd be very difficult.
It's a double line.
Okay.
There's a double yellow line. There's no, now again.
It's. I mean, as I really mentioned it, you're entitled to build your your facility and you're entitled to access. Uh, and I, we just think that there might be a traffic related issue, and I hope that you take that into consideration and look at it thoroughly for your own benefit.
Right.
I think that's.
Definitely.
You, you don't want to have a business that people can't get to when they're traveling one of the two ways on Perry Highway.
And could you talk a little bit about, you, you say you had discussions with McDonald's as far as people driving through their lot to get into into this?
Yeah, there's, there's an existing easement. There's an existing easement already between the two.
So they have to allow it.
Yeah, it's a top entrance, though. I mean, that, I mean.
Why not? But.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I I'm assuming that when McDonald's put in their second drive-through lane, they didn't encroton easement. Um, but. The escape lane now goes through the easement, so.
Okay, we've talked about the access. Uh, Sean, anything?
Uh, I didn't have any questions. I'm just ready. No, no questions.
Uh, looking at the picture that you have up on the uh screen here, at the back end of the property, the existing property, there's a little green space. Is that part of the property that you're purchasing, or is that part of something down below?
No, that's part of our property there. That's actually a large, uh, let's see if we could actually see it in Google Earth here. There's a large gray drop from the parking uh down. This will call it there. Yeah, that's still part of our property here, but pretty much we're developing where this existing site is. We're not really expanding the site footprint here, so essentially keeping that area green.
Okay, good. That would, I would prefer that. That's great. Um, I have no other questions. Uh, Anne?
Well, I, reading the um soil report, um geology uh report, um, there's a mention of blasting, which the town engineer also brought up.
Good point.
Uh, and it appeared that you'd run into bedrock.
So that's actually just kind of a standard um text that this geotech company puts in their reports, just in case you do run into bedrock there. Um, I spoke with them about this, and in our revision, we've actually uh completely struck that from the report there, so that'll no longer be included in the geotech report.
Well, there was also substantial materials on the site that apparently were not suitable for construction that needed to be removed and or somehow compacted or modified so that the building footprint could take place.
Yeah, so essentially with these geotech reports, um during construction, we refer to these and make sure we follow the guidelines that are set forth in this geotech report, so we aren't constructing on unsuitable soils and ensuring that we're at least constructing on something that will be beneficial for the longevity of this site as well. So any recommendations that are put forward in that geotech report, it will be adhered to during construction.
As you're looking at.
Yeah, we actually asked, we have, we have a note on on the plan, and when we close out a project, we ask for that report and sealed from by a by a geotechnical and and engineer.
So a couple of other questions. One was related to the perch water table. It's mentioned in the report, but there's no depth identified for it. Said ran into the water table between eleven and twenty feet, I think.
Uh, the usually they'll core down about twenty feet in. Sometimes I believe around that time point, you'll hit the water table. Um, at least in regards to this construction, I don't believe we the only thing that gets dug down that far might be the basement and at least for that, we do provide uh pumps to pump out any water that might be um uh incurred with the basement of this building. So that's kind of a standard thing that we come across with these Valvoline sites. So at least running into the water table is nothing new, since we do have basements with these.
I'm not, I'm not referring to the water table itself. The report indicates there's a perch water table above eleven feet. But it didn't indicate at what depth above eleven feet.
Okay, I could at least make note of that and see if there is a more specific.
Concerned about the basement and the sumps and the things you're gonna have to put in for control of any uh materials that you're dealing with in the basement. And then finally, there wasn't any analysis of the of the but I'm not exactly sure how to phrase that. There was no analysis of the soils from the standpoint of whether or not there was any hazardous materials or anything that was a concern, any kind of sampling done along those lines. I didn't notice. Was there?
Uh, there is always with these geotech reports. Um and at least if uh we could be a little more clear on that, I could go to our geotech report and make sure it's at least a little more bolded or pointed towards.
Did you notice that all I saw was the type of soil it was and at what depth? I didn't see anything that was indicating that there was a analysis comment.
I didn't no- no- notice it, but we had our 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 geotechnical engineer look, look, look at this. I can ask him.
Okay.
For that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering what um, what do you use the base, a basement for in a Valvoline?
People aren't right.
Really? They go into, oh, they do put them on.
Don't you drive in and they're down.
No, that's the uh garage.
Okay. I, I don't know. My husband was uh working for a car dealership. I've never seen anything with my car.
I've seen somewhere in a pit. If we're in a pit underneath.
I'm just kind of wondering because there's I mean, obviously, it's oil, and you got to make sure they have all of the um environmental um protections.
It's my concern with the perch water table and.
Yeah.
It's a sealed basement.
It's a sealed bit, yeah, and you said sealing outradon. I read that.
So so uh this is the basement plan?
Yeah, this is the floor plan for the basement here.
And what i- is that for people to?
So they basically stand on that uh rectangular part, and the car, cars above them, and that's how they serve. So we we refer to it as a pit. Yeah, so the people drive over the pit, they're guided in, and you 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 get their oil changed done in about fifteen, twenty minutes, and then they're on their way. They never get out of their car.
So the basement is really the pit?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's, it's like the Pennzoil bike.
Yeah, and it has um and I presume it is completely encased in cement, so there's no risk of um oil um.
It is.
Being, you know, ending up in the in the ground in any way, correct?
Correct. Correct.
To catch anything that might come out.
Well, yeah. Okay.
That would then be monitored.
Anything else, Shelley?
Uh, no, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, do we have anybody from the public uh involved? Nobody online?
Oh, we don't.
We're not even doing that anymore?
Just presenters and stuff.
Okay. Um.
Well, I mean, I, no, we don't, we don't do.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay, we'll talk later. Um.
So what it was the step, what steps have we got left for us this evening?
I think we were anticipating tabling this anyway, just due to the number of outstanding review comments.
Right.
Really, when there's this money, you all take it, take another look after we get revisions. So um if you also choose, you may table the application.
And I I think that makes sense, given the number of outstanding issues given from the from Gateway's letter. Uh, then just a couple of comments that we've made this evening, if all of that could be cleaned up and and uh represented or or ready for the next uh, the next meeting, if that's your timing as well.
I think that's what the interest is at the beginning.
Yeah.
So is that acceptable to Valvoline people? If we were to table?
Well, I mean, we have the right, so.
Oh, I know. I'm not, I'm not asking your permission. I'm just.
I, that was in line with uh, you know, some of the discussions that that Matt and I.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to catch some unawares. Okay, so um, do we need a motion or should we just table it?
Uh, we need to do a motion. Why not?
All right, we need a motion to table. Motion from Al to table second. From Anne. All in favor of tabling this? I, opposed. It is tabled.
Okay, Matt, um, usually we ask for revisions for the next planning commission meeting two full weeks ahead of time if possible, understanding that we're on a little bit of a shorter schedule because of the holiday this month. Uh, if, you know, I I know that you were working on some revisions already, so you know, if you have something you can send at the end of this week, terrific. If not, knock it out next week as soon as.
Yeah, definitely can. Our goal is uh at least by the end of this week here, so I'll be sure to get those over to you guys in a timely fashion.
Okay, great.
What would be the overall timing of this project if uh if it's approved? All of all, for construction.
Construction takes about six months.
Okay. And it would start uh pretty soon?
It will, well, it will probably depend on how long it takes you to have the H O P.
Yeah.
Usually one product projects have an H O P that adds a couple of months before we can get all of the development agreements executed and whatnot.
Okay. All right, just a question. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time here.
Uh, item number three on the agenda is the approval of the June sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Are there any changes or edits that anybody would like to make to the minutes? Seeing none, hearing none. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June sixth?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
I.
I, opposed. Minutes are approved. Uh, no general public comments unless you have something, uh, gentlemen, sitting out there in the audience.
I have a general.
Yes.
I understand they buy the property, they they have the right to do what they need to do with the property. Does the planning commission have the wherewithal to look at this and say, we got Jiffy Loo right up the street, you got?
Yeah, we can't do anything I can.
Sorry, I never really got that. No.
Yeah.
The, the ambience of what the place that looks like.
Yeah.
Is yeah, is somewhat bothersome from.
Yeah.
But, okay.
If they were putting in something that would make the other ones go out of business and cause light, the. Putting in something that would make the other ones go out of business and cause light, then maybe we could look at it, but yeah, no.
No, I still know.
But you know, you like.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had our druthers, uh, but we don't have our druthers.
Sadly, is, this is, um, and I mean, I will say, I I don't think that we entirely banned this use in the new district, but this application was in the last middle deadline before. The new zoning code takes effect, and so. There are other things that encourage more interactive uses, like the floor minimums that we. Implemented, you know, I don't think too many people want to live on top of the oil change uh business or whatever else you put on a second floor for that. I mean, it can be done.
Yeah.
You know, uh, we're not zoning these apps, it's just. We are, at the time, gonna be pushing the character a little bit more towards maybe what. We have in mind, yeah.
A little more vision than.
Yes.
Reaction.
These guys were out in storm force at those public meetings that had, knowing.
They wanted to make sure they got in before.
Exactly.
The, the, the other question, I should have said, but uh, I'm assuming this oil is gonna be stored in these pits in some kind of tanks until they haul it out, which goes.
Yeah.
Which goes to your point as far as.
Environment.
Water table, the environmental.
Yeah.
Uh, I I assume that would be addressed anyway by gave it.
Yeah, I mean, those are, there are environmental regulations even just beyond our level that apply to things like that, so, yeah.
They can get a burger and an oil change.
Yes, you can.
They can.
Get up, swing by.
They can recycle the uh oils over to McDonald's for their fries.
You have to drive around McDonald's three times.
Yeah, that's right, you get into with all the traffic.
All right, uh, I suspect we're up for a German. The last item on the, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second, by Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
That's right.
I did see that.